Good evening. Welcome to the September 3, 2024 Special Voting Meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Feig, could you take roll call, please?
Jason Mel.
Here.
Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Deborah Bloom.
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Anne Herring.
Present.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Travis Odom.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
All present.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our Solicitor, Tom Warner, and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristi Haller Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Diane Scornavaki, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. There are no amendments to the agenda for the special voting meeting, and there is no one signed up for public comments on the agenda items unless someone would like to come up and speak. Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on to committees, and we're going to start with Facilities and Transportation with Mr. Fiddler.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the student transportation contract between Quigley Bus Service, Inc. and the Exeter Township School District for the 2024-2025 school year at a cost of $297 per day for a student.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a question, maybe best for Mr. Feig. This kind of looks familiar. Is this a renewal, or is this something new?
It's, I would say renewal, but different student.
Okay.
So we do these every year. You know, the price did go up this year. Last year, I think they charged us one way. It was like $110 this year. It's, you know, which would have been $240 for the year. This year it's higher, $297, but, you know, we were able to find someone that can guarantee us 180-day coverage.
Got it.
Others couldn't guarantee that we'd have it, and if we had more drivers, we might be able to do it ourselves, but we're also short on vans, so we can't guarantee it, and this is a placement that we have to transport.
Got it. Good enough. Thank you.
I have a question for administration. Are we, even though it's not in the public content, are we allowed to divulge where the transportation is going to?
You can divulge where, but not who it is.
Obviously, yeah. Don't want to say who, but are we allowed to specify the city it's going to, just because I think there has been some question to the high cost per day or the per diem rate that we're paying for this?
Mr. Warner, that's a, yep.
It depends on the nature of the placement. If there's a special education student involved, then I'm a little concerned about divulging location, because that can lead you then to realize which school it is, and then trace it back to the student's identity. So I'm comfortable with the way it's worded.
Okay.
I think it's safe to say it's out of town.
There we go. That's good enough to, good enough for me. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, and you're good?
That's it for my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler. Mrs. Wilson, Personnel Committee.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following resignations: certificated staff, support staff, and extracurricular staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following appointments: certificated staff, mentors, support staff, certificated substitutes, and guest teachers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following change of status for food service staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following transfers of support staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following additional assignments for support staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of Schools Directors approve the following leaves of absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following course requests.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
I do have a question before we, sorry, get started. Just to review what intermittent family medical leave is, and like so early in the school year, wouldn't they have full sick leave?
Intermittent basically means that there is a medical condition that requires frequent doctor appointments for either themselves or a family member, so that they don't need a block of time. They just may need a day, like once a month, to go to a doctor appointment. So it's intermittent, and that way it is part of the law and the regulations, and it doesn't get held against them as far as absences goes, because it is approved medical leave.
Okay. Anything else for your end, Mrs. Wilson?
That's everything.
Okay, thank you. Next would be public comment for non-agenda items. No one has signed up unless anyone would like to come up and speak. And seeing none. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn this special voting meeting. But first, a message from our Superintendent, Dr. Haller.
I would just like to recognize that one of our new hires, Kira Jackson, is in the audience tonight. She's going to be teaching kindergarten for us at Lorraine. And Kira is an Exeter grad, so it's always nice to welcome our own home. So congratulations.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haller. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn this special voting meeting. Hearing none, special voting meeting is adjourned. All right, and now we are going to swap into the Committee of the Whole Meeting. So good evening. Welcome to the September 3, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. Mr. Feig, could you take roll call again, please?
Jason Mel.
Present.
Julia Schaefer.
I am here.
Deborah Bloom.
Present.
Dr. Andrea Battler.
Present.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Anne Herring.
Still present.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Travis Odom.
Still here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
All nine still here.
All right, perfect. Glad to see nobody ran away. Meeting minutes are attached. Does anyone have any changes or discussion they would like to make regarding meeting minutes for the August 6, 2024 Special Voting Meeting, the August 6, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting, or the August 20, 2024 Board Voting Meeting? Okay, hearing none. We will not be amending the agenda tonight. Public comments on agenda items. No one has signed up, unless someone would like to speak. Seeing none. We're going to go ahead and move over to committees, starting with Education with Dr. Battler.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following list of staff conferences. I'm assuming we don't need to discuss that. Next is field trips. It's reported that the following field trips within the 60-mile radius have been approved. Looks like the junior high music students will travel to the Renaissance Fair on October 1, and the fourth graders are all going to the Daniel Boone Homestead.
That's awesome that they're all going from all the schools, the same place.
Yes. On to letter C. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the early graduation requests for January 2025 for students 9352425 and student 9362425 per District Policy 217. Do we know if they're going on for higher education, or...just wondering.
I don't recall these two, but typically our students who are graduating early are going on to take college coursework.
Okay, just wondering. Thank you. Let's see here. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of a four-year extension of the current high school, the senior high school math textbooks. The textbook purchase is accounted for with the remaining ESER funds. The prices and the textbooks are listed below. Pardon me.
Just want to add that I know it was brought up at the last meeting about depleting the ESER funds, so these materials were already accounted for when that comment was made at last meeting.
Mr. Hoyt, if it's a four-year extension, what are we purchasing?
So we get the digital licenses, and all of the math textbooks come with a math workbook, a consumable that is shipped each year. So there's like, I don't know, it's like three-quarters of an inch to an inch-thick workbook. That's the part that gets shipped to us.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sorry, I was just thinking about that. All right. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached Title I Letter of Agreement between Exeter Township School District and the Burks County Intermediate Unit. Upon agreement to this contract, the Burks County Intermediate Unit will provide Title I equitable services to the identified non-public schools listed in the agreement for the 24-25 school year. No questions?
So this is just an annual contract that we do for our non-public students that potentially qualify for K-4 reading support, and that's always based upon the number of students that we receive from those schools. So this contract is always a different amount, but it comes from Title I funding.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors, yeah, approve the contract with the BCIU to provide professional development for ESL teachers as detailed in the contract at a cost of $900 to be paid with Title III funds.
Our Title III funds are what are used for ESL and immigrant students, and again, those numbers change each year to year, but we have seen a significant increase in our ESL population. So one of the parts that you're able to use as part of funding is professional development. So this is the same individual who came in last year to help to provide support with that. It's a continued support with this.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tutoring contract between Vicki Jones and the Exeter Township School District for services for students for the 24-25 and 25-26 school years at a cost of $115 per hour for individual sessions and $160 per hour for small group instruction for Wilson Reading Tutoring Services. This agreement is a renewal.
May I ask what constitutes a small group?
I can answer that for you, Dr. Herring. So particularly with any Orton-Gillingham-based instruction, which Wilson Reading System instruction is, small group is typically three to five students. And so I could talk a long time about Orton-Gillingham. We've talked about that previously when doing these contracts in terms of it's a very specific methodology for a very specific type of reading and writing-based learning disability, and that programming can be prescribed either for an individual, one-on-one, or for small group instruction, and that prescription is dependent upon the type of need that's being addressed through Orton-Gillingham. So that's why you'll see with these contracts, some of the providers are doing one-on-one, and some are doing small group instruction. I think it's G, H, I, and J are all different providers of Orton-Gillingham instruction, because if you have more than one student who requires one-on-one, happens to be at the same time during the schedule, then you need to retain more than one instructor to be able to do that. And we're doing multi-year agreements with them, because that ensures greater consistency in the service for our students over time. You're welcome.
Where are we getting some of our staff trained?
Yep, we do. They provide it as well.
Okay.
Yep.
So this is in addition?
Yep. This is the overflow of, it's two things. It's the overflow for what our staff can't fit into the schedule, and it's also to meet some very specific needs as a result of IEP programming.
And I have a question, too. Is this all for reading, or is it different subjects?
So Orton-Gillingham is a methodology that is primarily for teaching very explicit reading instruction. It also is coupled with some writing instruction as well, but the primary support of it is for explicit reading instruction.
Okay, thank you.
Particularly for students who might have very severe type of dyslexia.
Uh-huh, thank you.
And is Orton-Gillingham separate from, like different from Wilson in some way?
So Orton-Gillingham is the umbrella of instruction. It was developed back in the 1920s and '30s, and then as a result of the development of that methodology, there are more specific companies and programs who have taken that methodology and developed their own program, and that's what Wilson Reading System is.
Okay.
So Orton-Gillingham is the old...
When we were using all the, like, together. I just wanted to make sure, like, they're...
Yeah. Orton-Gillingham is the overall umbrella type of instruction, and for the one that's doing the very specific Wilson Reading, that is a program based on Orton-Gillingham methodology.
Understood.
Is that, okay?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. It is recommend, oh, I'm sorry. You have it? Okay. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tutoring contract between Alexia Stimitti and the Exeter Township School District for services for students for the 24 to the 26 school years at a cost of $140 per hour plus mileage for Orton-Gillingham Tutoring Services. This agreement is a renewal. Moving on. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tutoring contract between Victoria Pinkard and the Exeter Township School District for services for students for the 24 to the 26 school years at a cost of $135 per hour plus mileage for Orton-Gillingham Tutoring Services. This agreement is also a renewal. And finally, letter J. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a contract between Charlotte B. Granito and the Exeter Township School District for Orton-Gillingham Tutoring Services for students for the 24 through the 26 school years at a cost of $125 an hour plus mileage. This agreement is also a renewal. Moving on from Orton-Gillingham, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between Cottage 7 Education and the Exeter Township School District for special education services for students, or excuse me, for student 9342425 for the 2024-25 school year at a cost of $240 per day for a total of $43,200. It is also recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a contract between Surplus Behavioral Health of Pennsylvania and the Exeter Township School District for services for students for the 2024 to 2025 school year at a cost of $120 per hour for board-certified behavioral analysis services, $60 per hour for registered behavior technician services. This agreement is also a renewal. Okay, if there's no discussion, then, Mr. Mel, I will be moving A, C through L, just skipping B to the voting meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Battler. Next, Finance and Audit Committee with Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Recommend that Exeter School District Board approve the 2024 proposal from Conrad Seigel for health and welfare benefits consulting services with the proposal attached. Maybe we could get a little more insight into this?
Certainly, I can answer that question for you. The ACA report is the Affordable Care Act, and that is commonly known as Obamacare. And the federal government still requires all employers to do a massive report on every single employee that we have, their demographics and their work hours, and that is to ensure that anyone working over 30 hours a week is offered the chance to purchase benefits, healthcare benefits.
So it really comes down to offer versus accept, and also the other thing is they make sure that highly compensated employees aren't given better benefits than the lowly compensated employees. Have we used this service before? Every year.
Yes.
And did their rates go up?
They go up slightly with inflation every year, but the cost is relatively the same each year.
Just out of curiosity, how much, when you say massive amount of work, that usually means a massive amount of hours?
Massive amount of work.
Do we know how much of our budget's spent on this year? That's why we use that. But I mean... We pull the reports and they put it together. You actually have to report by month who was offered and who accepted, or who took the coverage, you know, and you have to do it by every month. You also have to report family members, and I guess you'd call it number of belly buttons that are covered, not just number of employees, but number, I call it belly buttons, but people.
Yeah, it's a month-to-month report of every single person that's employed with the district, including the full-time employees, part-time employees, coaches, substitutes, every single person that receives a paycheck as an employee here has to be on that report every month, associated with any of the healthcare benefits that they obtain through our...
And hours worked, too.
And the hours they've worked.
Just, I mean, I understand it all. Just out of curiosity, though, I'd love to know last year how much, maybe next for the voting meeting, we could just find out how much we spent with that, with this service throughout the year. Sure. Thanks. Any other discussion? All right, the last thing I have is just informative, and that is that two weeks ago, the school district and the township did have a meeting. It was Dr. Haller, myself, and Mr. Mel and Mr. Feig, and we met with a couple employees of the township along with their chairman, Mr. Pyho. I think that it was a highly successful meeting. We were able to just talk about different things within the district and just kind of give them a little point of view of the district and where we see the district now versus in the future, and we have agreed to continue that relationship. I think it's a great start to the relationship. There will be no advisory committee or community members on a committee. This is more going to be an ad hoc committee that we'll use as needed. There was a suggestion of maybe touching base every quarter, unless we would need to sooner, but right now we'll just treat it as get together when necessary. But it was a good way, I think, to establish communication. Everybody has each other's contacts, and moving forward, I think that this will be a way to keep each other informed of different issues and things going on within the district and the township. I don't know if, Dr. Haller or Mr. Mel, you have anything else to add?
Nothing else to add from my end. No, I thought it was a good discussion.
Great.
Yeah, it was very nice to meet with the supervisors, well, to meet with Mr. Pyho. He's very friendly, very nice, very supportive of the school district, and I think this is a real opportunity for the Exeter Township School Board and the supervisors to cultivate a nice working relationship for the betterment of the community. So I was grateful that they were willing to meet with us, and it was such a nice conversation.
I just wanted to add, I thought it was a great meeting, and I think both sides, I mean, I wouldn't call it sides, but we all understand it's the same taxpayer as we answer to.
Agreed. Shemel, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Fiddler, did you have anything to discuss for Facilities and Transportation?
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you, sir. Personnel Committee with Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, so on the voting meeting, we will have a new job description for the Clerk, General Administration Mail Driver. Any questions about it?
What's the reasoning behind it, do you know?
Periodically, we go through the jobs when someone is transferred into position. We look at what the duties had been and what they have morphed into, especially after COVID, so it's just an updated job description of what we previously had.
Okay, we'll move that forward to the voting meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Policy Committee with Dr. Herring.
Thank you. For first reading, we have policy number 146.1, policy 218, and policy 304.1. Mrs. Harris?
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Policy 146.1 and policy 218, there's no changes to the actual contents of the policy. They're just updates to the legal citations, because there were some changes in code with reference to new laws that have been passed and regulations. Policy 304.1, our nepotism policy, that is actually a whole clean new copy of that policy. If you recall, as we have been working through all of this policy work and doing revisions, I have mentioned previously that some of the revisions that we do are coming because there's been changes in laws and regulations, and PSBA will put out a new policy and then will revise ours accordingly. The other policy work that we do is looking back in our policy book at policies that haven't been revised in a really long time and may not be getting anything new in the way of changes from PSBA as a result of changes in regulation, but we may look at them and say, hey, that's, you know, a different, it's worded differently than what we do now, or we haven't looked at this policy in 12 years. We should bring it up for review and make sure that everything in there is still the way that we want it to look. The nepotism policy is one of those policies. So this isn't anything that's new coming from PSBA. This is one of the older ones that I'm looking back at in that process and saw that it hadn't been revised in quite a few years. And when Dr. Haller and I were reviewing it, we thought, boy, the language in here is really confusing. And if we found it confusing as the people who are implementing policy, we thought, this is one that we better do a rewrite on or some revisions on, because it didn't make a whole lot of sense. It looked like one of those policies where probably it was changed a couple of times, and so you started to get a lot of different wording and verbiage in there, and it just didn't flow anymore. So we asked Ms. Montane if she would write a clean and sort of up-to-date copy of the nepotism policy for us, which is what you have here as a draft. The nepotism policy is not a required policy by PSBA, so some are required, some are optional based on your district. Since we already had one in existence, we're continuing to keep one in existence. But so in order for Ms. Montane to create this draft, what she did was pull from districts who have a nepotism policy, sort of made that coincide with what we already had in existence, and then came up with this new draft. So Dr. Haller and I, looking at the new draft, felt like it was much clearer in its explanation of what constitutes nepotism, what is allowed and what is not allowed in terms of our hiring practices here in the district. And Dr. Haller, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to say. I did catch, I wanted to tell you, too, I caught one correction in here that I want to make before second reading and talk to the board about, but go ahead.
So I just want to commend our district for having a nepotism policy, because as Dawn shared, it's not a required policy, and not all districts have a nepotism policy. But in the district's effort over the last, I think that policy, like you said, is 10 years old.
Yeah.
In their effort to making sure that we have transparent hiring practices, the district took the initiative years ago to implement a nepotism policy, and it's something that we believe is important to keep, because it's no secret that we have a very close-knit community and that we, a lot of our employees, from our teachers to our administrators to our support staff, have ties to this community, and they believe in our school system, they believe in the education, and they want to be part of that process. However, when you have so many people that are connected to a school district in whatever way, you also want to make sure that you have a process, a good process for hiring, but that you also have things like a nepotism policy in place to ensure that everything, like I said, is transparent, and Exeter has always tried to make sure that they've done that. So that's why we believe that revising that policy was important. So, that's why we believe that revising that policy was important and keeping the policy is important.
I mentioned, there was one inconsistency that I caught that with board, you know, consensus, I'd like to just correct for the next meeting. There's one place in the, in the policy where it reads, "No teacher shall be employed," and then in another place in the policy, it reads, "No employee shall be employed." It's, they should both say, "No employee" because a nepotism policy applies to more than just our teaching staff. It applies to our administrative staff, our support staff, et cetera. So, with your understanding, I'd like to just make that a sort of grammatical semantic little correction there.
And to be clear, that doesn't, this nepotism policy doesn't say that people can't be hired if they have a relation-
Correct.
-in the district. That's not what it says.
It gives parameters for doing so.
It gives parameters for ensuring that there's supervision in place and things of that nature, but it doesn't prohibit the district from hiring people who perhaps may be related.
Question, do we have a policy that covers relationships? We do. Okay, yeah, good. You can, you can Google me and GPU and find out my experience with that, with a CEO and a vice president of communications, not me, who had a relationship and then he got canned and she got canned.
Yeah, that's, that's also a very important policy to have in place to protect employees. So, we do have that policy in place.
It's 304.2.
Okay. And another question on the first one, how long have we had the trauma-informed policy, roughly?
I know I did the original version of that policy here, so it's been within the last four years. If you give me one quick second, I can pull up our summary doc that we keep.
No, no, no.
Yes, it's been since I've been here, was the original.
It was the only part of my orientation with PBSA that was good.
That you liked?
Because the guy talked to us. He didn't just read the slides off the screen, which was horrible. But this guy was, I think he was an attorney. You, I forget his name, Tom, if I dig out my notes, it probably-
Was it Tom Warner?
Wasn't Tom Warner, let me tell you. It might have been Stuart. Stuart Nate is the guy who's been at PSBA for a while. They have a few, and they've turned over.
Yeah, he was terrific. And he spoke to us. He didn't read to us.
Yeah, he's a good speaker, but it may have been him, but they have a few.
Yeah, anyway, okay.
Our trauma-informed approach policy is very robust and very comprehensive, and it's a lot of work that the team has put into making sure that that particular policy is implemented across the district.
Good, thank you.
I, I have one question, and it was brought up to me earlier, and it does confuse me a little bit. You use the word "employed," and when you say, "No teacher shall be employed," you're saying no teacher shall be hired at that moment? Is that the meaning?
Yeah, employed means hired.
Because when I hear "employed," I think of underemployment. So, if someone is employed with the school district and there's a board member-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It confused me there. So, now, because we have a board member that has a wife that's a teacher or vice versa.
Yeah, in this case, the word-
That confuses me.
Yeah, the word "employed" means accepted by the district for hiring.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you don't think we should, there's no need to change it?
We can-
That's up to the board, if they're, you know, if you're worried about confusion around that?
I don't know what.
You can rework the language. I mean, if, there's two sections that, there's two snippets that appear to be at issue. One is the teacher versus employee thing.
Right.
Easy fix. The other is employed, which implies that we'd sort of go back and have the board revote on somebody who's already hired, which is not the intention, right? So, this is a prospective policy rather than looking back. So, we can, we can change the language to reflect hired rather than employed.
And correcting if I'm wrong, but it doesn't stop us from hiring someone who has, because oftentimes that becomes the issue. Oh, well, we can't hire someone because, or they can't do something because their, their spouse is on the board. It doesn't stop us from, you could certainly write a policy like that, but you could potentially eliminate a number of candidates along the way, not just to be teachers, but to, to be an aide or a secretary, a coach. So, you know, you wouldn't typically have a, a policy that strict. It's just to provide guidance for hiring practice.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, in terms of board approval, all it really does is say anyone who is, who is related would, would be recused from a vote, essentially, just to make it sort of more consumable. That's really the intent in terms of board action. Doesn't, right, it's totally appropriate, doesn't prevent that person from being hired. It just recuses the person who's involved.
We could even just add "to be employed."
Yep, yeah. I mean, those are, those are relatively easy fixes.
Because I agree with that, yeah. Employed versus to be employed.
Thank you for the feedback. Anything else? That's it for me then, Dr. Herring.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Next is public comments on non-agenda items. It's last call. If anybody would like to come up to this podium and say something to us, I really want somebody to come up there and, and just yell at us, but no, it's okay. Yeah, I know, right. Yeah, let me take that back. So, no one has signed up and no one is willing to come up, so we're going to go ahead and, we are going to move the following items to our September voting agenda. Obviously, meeting minutes, and then we're going to do 4A and 4C through L, 5A, 7A, and 8A. And are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time? Mrs. Schaefer?
Thank you. I just want to make a quick announcement regarding Exeter Community Education Foundation. The Student Outreach Committee is, we have an upcoming event the end of this month, so we are looking for donations from our community. So, if you would like to participate, you can head over to the ECEF Foundation's website on Facebook, and there is an Amazon wishlist that you can click on to help support us. Thank you.
Mr. Mill?
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Go ahead, Mr. Morgan.
I'd just like to congratulate everyone for a great start to the school year, at least from what I've heard, but a special thanks to our transportation team. I think that is a very, very difficult job to kick off, to get right, to fine-tune. I know that they, they do a great job, and they get a lot of calls to make sure that things are getting right and kids are safe, and just worth the, the extra shout-out to say thanks for what they do.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Anyone else? All right. Next board meeting will be our voting meeting on Tuesday, September 17th at 7:00 PM. The board will meet in executive session immediately following the adjournment of this meeting to discuss the potential sale of property across from the Reifton School, as well as to discuss personnel. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting.